...or so till six o'clock and we'll get ready to begin our meeting this afternoon. And for those that might be watching us at home, give them opportunity to tune in at six o'clock as advertised. And so just give us another minute to get to rolling here and we'll officially call our meeting to order tonight. All right. Good afternoon, everyone again, and thank you for those of you that are in attendance for being here tonight to participate in our meeting. I think probably most of you are here relative to an agenda item. And we thank you for joining us. And for those that are joining us from at home, we are streaming live on Facebook and it'll be available tomorrow on YouTube as well. Just thinking, getting ready for tonight, this is the eighth month that we've been doing these virtual meetings. That just doesn't seem possible that we started with this back in April and here it is November and have no idea how much longer it will continue to go in this fashion. But it's, I hope it doesn't become a new norm. I still like to see the folks here that participate in person and see what's going on in person. I just think that adds so much to this process. But for those who do watch at home, we thank you for caring enough about county government to view and to see what does take place. So thank all of you again for being here. And it's already dark outside. We started daylight savings time Saturday night, so things are changing and we'll be really into the big holiday season. I think people were getting ready for Christmas back in August. We went in a Cracker Barrel and they already had out Christmas decorations before Labor Day. So I prefer to take them in order and enjoy each one as they come. But I guess some people kind of rush things. So anyhow, enough said. Thank you again. Thank all of you again. And we do officially call to order the November meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. Didn't say welcome. We're going to have an invocation again by Commissioner Haywood. She did such a good job last month, so we're going to give her that assignment again tonight. And following the invocation, we'll have our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Almighty God and Heavenly Father, thank you for your presence with us here tonight as we come together with the intent to govern wisely. I thank you for the opportunity to serve in leadership. And I look beside me here and out at the audience at those who are in leadership positions. And we all know the same thing, and that is with the opportunity to lead and govern comes a huge responsibility, a responsibility to be wise, to be fair, to respect the rights of all people, and to try to honor you in all that we do. I ask that as our citizens who have not voted go to the polls tomorrow to exercise their right to vote. I pray that all will go smoothly, that we will respect one another, respect the choices that those who are different from us would make, and help us to realize we all come from different backgrounds, from different viewpoints. But just because someone sees something differently does not mean that they're right or wrong. It just means that we're different, that we need to listen to one another because we can make each other better and stronger when we hear those opinions that are different from ours. Thank you again for coming and being among us in our midst as we try to make wise decisions tonight. I ask these things in the name of Jesus, my Lord and my Savior, and I thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have some special recognitions tonight. One involves Jerry Brower, who's retiring from the Randolph County Sheriff's Department after 28 years. And I guess Sheriff Seabolt will be doing that officially here in just a moment. And we also, this is our meeting every year that we have to recognize the Service Award, the service of our employees here in the county. And those of you that are familiar with what we do, we always bring them in in person, give them a nice piece of pottery, recognizing the years that they have served. So we're going to do that a little differently this year as well. I think Hal and staff have got that well planned. And we'll be going through that process also. A great number of our employees continue to pile up the years of working for our county. And that's one of the good things. It's helped this county to better serve its citizens over the years. So we're going to do that right now. And so Sheriff, you want to come and do the honors?
Mr. Chairman, other members, I am very honored to stand up here and talk about a man who meant a lot to the Randolph County Sheriff's Office. Captain Brower began his law enforcement career in Randolph County with the Sheriff's Office in 1992, and he worked as a bailiff in the old courthouse. Jerry also worked in crime scene investigations and was then transferred to the Civil Division where he spent the majority of his career. He was promoted in 2016 to captain and also participated in the emergency response team. He was instrumental in evolving tactical training. Jerry retires with 28 years of service, taking with him a vast amount of knowledge that cannot be replaced. We are grateful for his service. His plans for retirement are volunteering with Gangs to God Ministry and spending time with his wife, Minette, two kids, and two grandchildren. Since he's left, we've lost a lot. It's like losing your right arm in the Civil Department. He is very knowledgeable in that area. And I'm sure that we've made several phone calls since he's retired to get his advice or input on a certain situation. Last, I'd like to say, Jerry, it's been an honor to work with you, I guess, the last 18 months of your career. I certainly appreciate everything you've done, and hopefully you won't forget us. Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, Jerry, would you, you want something to say?
Yeah, just, I'd like to thank my wife, first of all, for allowing me to be in law enforcement, for putting up with that, and for Sheriff Seabolt and all the preceding sheriffs that I've worked for. I was truly blessed. I did the job I wanted to do, made a career of it. I'm truly blessed. I decided it was time to get out. I hopefully have beat pancreatic cancer. I'm three, a little over three years out and I'm in remission as far as they're concerned at this point. And so I just thought, why not get out when I'm ahead and go do something? I'm currently helping a lot in my church. I'm not going completely feral. So I am growing a beard because I haven't had a beard in 28 years. So I'm just enjoying it and I'm enjoying my wife and my grandkids a little more now that I've got the time.
Thank you, Jerry.
And I have no plans past that.
Would you come forward?
Sure.
I'm sure God has plans for you.
We give these clocks to those that retire, Jerry. But thank you and congratulations for coming so close to expressing appreciation that we owe to you for the service that you give to this county. I think it speaks well. You've served more than a few sheriffs in that career. So you did things right in serving the public of this county. And that speaks very well to you, in certain ways you've earned most and the very best in retirement, and all the things you want to do. So it's great that you can do that and still find good health and have some good days. So thank you. It says, "In grateful appreciation to Captain Jerry Brower, recognition of 28 years of service, November the 2nd, 2020, Randolph County Board Commissioner, Dr. Wessie."
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff, for this and for what you're doing in these troubled, trying days for us. Thank you very much. Now's our 2020 Service Awards, and Hal's going to present. There is a listing in your agenda package for each one of these, but I think Hal has this set up, so we'll get to see them.
We're going to do this a little different tonight because of COVID and social distance. And this is the time of year that we always recognize our employees in Randolph County for their longevity. And we try to bring them to commissioners' meetings and let them and present them with some pottery. And this year, we're going to show you their pictures very quickly. Dana and Sarah did an excellent job taking these individual pictures. We have 879 employees in Randolph County Government, 26 part-time. We have 27 individual departments. Every employee of Randolph County is a first responder during this COVID emergency pandemic that we've been in, and the role of county government continues to grow during this crisis. We have 45 employees that you're seeing there. They're being recognized for 15, 20, 25, and 30-year milestones with the Randolph County Government. Together, these 45 employees have over 940 years of combined service to this county. These 45 employees come from 10 departments across Randolph County Government. Here's a breakdown of the 45 employees by departments. We have one employee in administration with 20 years of service that's being recognized. That's Will Massey sitting right there on the right. We have two employees in building inspections representing 45 years of service in Randolph County Government. Seven employees at the Department of Social Services with 145 years of service to our community. Two employees in emergency services representing 45 years of service. Eight employees in public health representing 155 years of service. One employee in information technology who has 25 years of service is being recognized. We have two employees in planning and zoning that represent 45 years of service to Randolph County Government. Two in the registered deeds office with 35, total 35 years of service. We have 13 employees in the Randolph County Sheriff's Office representing 265 years of service that are being recognized tonight. We have seven employees in the tax department representing 160 years combined service as being recognized by these pictures here tonight. I told Dana and Sarah that we normally do the group photographs, and everybody always looks different in a group photograph. But they did a great job taking these pictures. They all turned out pretty good as everybody was getting their awards. They came up here individually, so we social distanced and you didn't have a large amount of people in a particular area. And on behalf of our employees of Randolph County, the 879 employees in 27 departments, I just want to say, as your county manager, we appreciate you as a Board of County Commissioners and the issues that you're struggling with every month, every day that we're here. These are unique historic times in Randolph County Government. We appreciate our employees and we appreciate our Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Hal. And thanks to all of these employees and for their many years of service to the citizens of this county. And it's, you notice, we started 15 years, so there's a lot of others that's been here, five and 10 years also. But this is a great honor to recognize these folks every year. And again, one of those things that we miss doing in person. But that does not take away from the appreciation that we have for their efforts and working through some difficult circumstances, difficult times, dealing with the public, and again, with these issues that we face every day. So thanks to all of our employees, those that are present here tonight with us, who serve us every day, and for those of you that we have seen in picture tonight, and I hope some of you are watching from home and understand how much we appreciate your service to this county, our officers that are here tonight. We thank you for watching over us and looking after us. We thank you for that. So, okay. Our next item of business is the public comment period. Is there anyone signed up to speak tonight? We're having anything from email or anything to read into the record. Okay. Next is the consent agenda. We have several items there. Those have been a part of your package. You want to have an item there that you want, have a question, or you want to pull out to vote on separately?
I have a couple I'd like to make just to comment on.
Okay.
Because when we vote on these, we vote on them en masse. And so I just want to comment on the Randolph County Cooperative Extension receiving a grant for $5,000 from Band NC Initiative and another $5,000 more that came to the county from the Southern Rural Development Center that went to Cooperative Extension. So this $10,000 is going to be used to assist with creating opportunities for everyone to access and be able to use Internet and devices, especially now that COVID has highlighted that divide. And it's especially significant, I think, because the National Organization of County Commissioners last year made broadband access their number one priority because it is such a huge issue. And so COVID has just shined the light on that need and the inequities that are there. So I did want to bring that out.
The North Carolina Association has had it, I think, for the last two years as its number one priority.
Okay, good.
We have some issues in Randolph, but not like, especially up in the Northeast and the Far West.
Within Randolph, we've got...
That's right.
...Raniden area.
Yes, we do. We've got some boards in Randolph, but some of them are almost countywide.
Sure.
It's a big issue.
It is a big issue. And so I appreciate the Cooperative Extension taking this money and using it in that fashion. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that the Adoption Awareness Month, the Department of Social, with the Department of Social Services wants us to recognize November as Adoption Awareness Month. And we currently have 145 children in foster care, and with 31 of these have adoption as their permanent plan. So in my book, people who adopt are heroes. Often, they adopt kids with special needs. I know a young man right now that has a son who is about middle school age, and they recently adopted a child. And they've been trying to get through this process for well over a year. And the little girl is a special needs child. And so to see what they've been through and their commitment to adopt is, it's pretty remarkable. So I just wanted to make a comment about November being Adoption Awareness Month.
Thank you again. And we sometimes live a sheltered life. We take life for granted sometimes from day to day. But one of the fastest-growing areas of this county is in adoption and child protective services. And to see the issues and the life that some of these children have to live in the county is heartbreaking. And it's so appreciative for those at the Department of Social Services who live with it every day and go into homes and the things that they see and experience. But we're just grateful for those who do that. And the Adoption Awareness Month is a recognition of that. Anything else?
Chairman, I guess, as an adoptive parent, not through social services, but through an agency, I was thinking, I didn't put it together, but I guess 26 years ago this month, my daughter's finalization took place. So I realized that adoption was, November was adoption. So we appreciate what those folks do because it's, there's a lot of need out there. So we appreciate it.
You like her a little better than the goats.
I don't know about that. I think I was more of a special needs parent than what she bargained for.
I have a daughter that works with special needs at Archival Trinity Middle School. She brings some of them home with her through the Easter Seals Program. And I've been there with some of those kids, and it just, it breaks your heart, but those that work with them and try to give them a little better life. And so many times, again, we just, we don't understand how these things happen, but it's a part of life and the times that we live. So thank you. Thank you, David. Any other comments? I have a motion on the consent agenda.
So move. The document is presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Those in favor will say aye. Those no, and the consent agenda is approved. Okay, our first item of business tonight is a public hearing on a project, economic development project, Kevin Franklin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, and before I make these comments, I'll mention that I also am an adoptive dad. And so this month, and the awareness of adoption is important to me and my family as well. So, good evening. I'm here and pleased to speak with you this evening about a proposed building renovation project by Platinum Collection Furniture. It's a California-based corporation manufactures furniture under the name of Ariston Hospitality. And I believe the sign, Ariston Hospitality, went up in front of the building last week. Ariston currently has factories in California and Asia that develop and manufacture a wide array of furnishings for the hospitality and commercial properties. In addition to hotel and resort guest room furnishings, Ariston also produces seating, case goods, and millwork for public areas, country clubs, assisted living, and restaurants. They've worked with major hotels, including Marriott, Hilton, Waldorf, Astoria, Wynn, and Embassy Suites. So you see that they do a lot of high-end work. In early 2020, the company purchased High Point-based Motiva, a small furniture company. And during this transaction, the owner of the company, Tony Tsai, experienced the High Point furniture industry firsthand, decided to locate his East Coast distribution hub for Ariston here. Now, long-term, they're actually considering moving the entire California operation to North Carolina. So we're pleased about that consideration as well. Their production facilities in Asia will remain in place. The company purchased in High Point a vacant commercial property located at 1581 Prospect Street, and they're in the process of repurposing the property to be its flagship manufacturing and warehousing facility. Now, the property is wholly in the city of High Point, although 80% of the building is located in Guilford County and 20% is located here in Randolph County. The company has secured the building, but significant upgrades are needed, including HVAC and new roof and other things in order to put this building back into productive reuse. Total investment required for upfits and renovations to the building is anticipated to be $1,574,600. And there's an additional investment of more than $800,000 that's anticipated for machinery and equipment in the facility over the next three years. The company is committed to creating 15 new jobs directly related to the renovation project. And this is going to be over a two-year period. There's actually a few more over a three-year period, referencing two years because that's required for the building reuse grant program. The average wage of these new jobs will be $37,147, adding over $550,000 annually to the company's payroll here in North Carolina. The current Randolph County private sector wage is $36,622. So we always love to see these projects that bring in jobs with wages that exceed our current county private sector average wage. This project is eligible for a building reuse grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce in the amount of $90,000. And we're requesting that the county of Randolph apply for this grant on behalf of the company. The grant requires, as you know, having done many of these projects in the past, requires a 5% local government match. In this case, it would be $4,500. Because the property crosses the county line, the city of High Point will consider providing 80% of this match, or $3,600, with Randolph County providing the remaining 20% or $900 for that match. The county has applied for building reuse grants in the past, so you also recognize that this is a two-year program. And the grant is structured as a deferred forgivable loan until all of the project requirements are met and the project is closed. In the unlikely event of a default, the property owner is willing to assume the county's financial risk during this period via personal guarantee. The EDC believes that Platinum Collection Furniture Building Renovation is a good economic development project for Randolph County and for the city of High Point. And I will add that, as you know, the city of High Point bleeds into Randolph County as it does in three other counties. And so this portion of the building is in the city of High Point in Randolph County. The project will increase the value of the building, will result in the creation of 15 quality new jobs, and therefore, we request that the county authorize submission of the building reuse grant and commit to 20% of the required local government match, pending consideration and approval by the city of High Point of the remaining 80%. They will meet in public session for public hearing in a couple of weeks to review. I would also like to acknowledge that Jeffrey Boykin is here, sitting on the back row in representation of the company. I think he'll say a few words in a moment, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And certainly, Mr. Boykin can answer any questions that you may have as well.
While 80% of the properties in Guilford, there's a reason that Randolph is handling the grant.
There is. So it's related to the average wages of the communities. The average wage I've mentioned of Randolph County is a little over $36,000, or the average wage for Guilford County, of which the city of High Point is considered as $49,000. And so in terms of eligibility for this particular grant and these dollars associated, there was a much higher likelihood that Randolph County would be considered for, that the company would be considered for the grant if submitted through Randolph County rather than through Guilford County because of the disparity in wages. We would love at one point to continue to see our wage standard go up, but at this point, we're significantly lower than the county of Guilford right now.
Any questions, Kevin? All right. I will open the public hearing and ask for those who wish to speak tonight to this matter.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Boykin. I'm an attorney in Raleigh, and I'm the local counsel for Platinum Collection Furniture DBA, Ariston Hospitality. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I think everything's covered pretty much in detail in the application. But a couple of things I would like to say in general. First, I really want to thank Mr. Franklin and Ms. Gaddis. Obviously, we couldn't have done this without them. They were very efficient in getting this matter handled, and they're pretty great people, too. I want to thank each one of you for your thoughtful consideration of this matter and for your staffs in helping prepare you for this. And on the drive up here from Raleigh, I spoke to Mr. Tony Tsai, who's the founder and CEO of the company. And he insisted that I express to each of you his absolute excitement in bringing his company here and in moving his family here. They purchased a home with, and I believe they closed on it about two weeks ago. So they're not only going to be business people here, they're going to be citizens here, too.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're very welcome.
Yes. Any questions, Jeffrey? If you do an expansion, we hope it's in Randolph.
Well, I think, you know, we're heading in that direction, right?
Hope business is good.
Very good. Thank you all.
We're always grateful for our businesses.
Would you just sign in at the podium?
Yes, of course.
Thank you so much.
Always grateful for our businesses that are supplying the jobs and... Always grateful for our businesses that are supplying the jobs and payroll, uh, in our area. Yes, sir.
Thank you for taking the time to come personally for the hearing.
Is there anyone else here tonight who wishes to speak to this project? Hearing none, then, uh, we will close the public hearing. And, uh, we will come back to the Board of County Commissioners for action on, on the request. There is a, uh, there is a resolution, uh, that is in your agenda packet. Uh, resolution authorizing application for a building reuse grant and payl- payment by the county of the required local match. And as Kevin has pointed out, uh, the match that is divided along the ground, the, the percentages of, uh, location within the two counties. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing application for a building reuse grant and payment by the county of the required local match of $900.
Is there a second to the motion? Have a second, Commissioner Kidd. Further discussion on the motion? Those in favor will say aye, opposed no, and it's approved. Thank you for coming tonight, Jeffrey, and, uh, presenting to us. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is, uh, we're going to have a, a, a update on our capital projects. But before that, um, we've asked Will to sort of give us a, um, a little status report on the finances of the county. Uh, those of you that were here when we went through our budget had quite a bit of unknowns. And those were factored into the budget that we adopted for this year. And, uh, Will's going to give us a little status report. Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, evening. As Chairman mentioned, you know, back in the springtime, there was a lot of uncertainty. With regards to the county's finances, you know, there were a couple of questions. One is, um, how was the, um, spread of the virus going to change people's habits? What was the, you know, stay-at-home orders going to do to businesses? What was the unemployment rate going to be? Different things like that. How was that going to affect the last fiscal year that ended June 30th? And also, how long was it going to carry on to, to affect the 2020, 21 as well, too? I can address the first question tonight, but the second question, we still have a lot of uncertainty about. But, you know, the federal government, uh, passed the CARES Act. And that created a lot of stimulus money in a lot of different ways. You had money that was going for the Paycheck Protection Program for businesses. You had stimulus money that was going to individuals. You had unemployment benefits. All that seemed to help stabilize the economy when there was a shutdown. Our property taxes were pretty much already collected prior to the pandemic. Most of it was collected back in, by January. We did finish the year, uh, slightly over 99%, which has always been the, uh, tax department's target. Uh, 99.08, but it was above 99%. Sales tax, because of all the stimulus money, that seemed to have had some effect. The month of April was down below last year, but every other month was above last year, uh, the previous year. So, uh, you know, we maintained our sales tax revenues and, um, sales and services sta- were stable. Uh, the only thing that started to go down was our interest income because the Federal Reserve lowered interest rates. And, um, for most of the year, we had pretty good return. So in summary, you know, we finished 2019, 20, yeah, in pretty good shape. Where that takes us going into the fall, we still don't know. But, uh, the July distribution was above July of 2019. I believe the state's August collections are about 1.5% above. We've been doing better than the state, so I would hope we would do better than that, uh, for August. But the stimulus money that has been flowing around is being used up. So as the virus spreads, as this money disappears, we'll just have to see how that affects us going on. But as of June 30th, uh, we were in pretty good shape. As you recall, our policy, fund balance policy states that anything above 24% is set aside and assigned for capital improvements. And so that's where we are. I wanted to give you that update. There's about $6 million of our fund balance that fell into that category. So we had suspended the courthouse project and a couple of other things that were pending. So, um, the board, if you want to consider that, uh, after the end of Paxton's presentation, we'll come back and revisit all that and see if you want to move forward on anything.
Any questions of Hal? I mean, Will, I'm sorry. Will?
I guess Hal, uh, you know, you got me calling down there. Will, um, I guess the property tax collections, uh, through, I guess, September 1st, were a little bit above where we were last year. Are people paying earlier because they had the, the COVID money, do you think, or?
Either that, uh, they decide they were going to take advantage of the discount period. You know, there's any number of things. It's still a little bit early to say, hey, we're 5% ahead of last year. We collected 5% ahead. That means to me, things are okay out there, well enough, that where people, you know, had the wherewithal to be able to pay their par- property taxes maybe a little bit early. But, you know, are we ahead of budget? We'll, we'll have to see probably after we hit January.
Right.
Then we'll, they'll have a better feel for how far ahead are we.
And the same thing on sales tax. We, we budgeted a lesser amount than just to be conservative. And we're well above that, I'm assuming.
Yes, we are. Yep.
Just because it hasn't dropped as much.
Yeah, what I was comparing was going back a year because that's a little bit better than this. A number we picked out of the air to kind of say, this is what we want to set in our budget.
But, but the 13%, that's over last year. That's not over budget.
Right. That's over last year. That's correct.
And, and the budget's less, we budgeted less than what we probably had in the actual last year.
Right. So July's looking pretty good.
But that's all we got at this point.
That's all we've got so far.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Any questions again, Will? All right. Paxton?
Uh, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Despite COVID, we still have several projects going on. I wanted to give you a quick update on, starting with the detention center. And every month, uh, Bordeaux does an aerial photograph to track their progress. And this is the most recent, recent one. Um, this was taken right after they finished up the roof. And probably the week after this, they went and set the HVAC units. So the roof now, the building's officially dried in. Just a quick overview of the addition. You've got five housing units, uh, JK and L are medium security, uh, steel cell units. And M Pod is a low-security dormitory. N Pod, that's our special populations unit. It's a combination of dormitory and steel cells. The area is highlighted in yellow. Those are the control rooms. And the area in red, that's the master control for the whole building. It's going to be transferred from the existing building to that spot. So just some milestones. Uh, we have gotten the final approval from the Department of Insurance uh, and also from the Department of Health and Human Services for the plan approval. Uh, as I said, it's, it's officially dried in. We've also gotten permanent power and, uh, they set the transformer and the meter. And a couple of weeks ago, they changed out the meter for the gas for the building with all the new additional gas load. They had to upgrade that meter. So that's been done. A couple of upcoming milestones. We've got, uh, above signal inspection coming up, you know, on the 17th of November. And then about a week later, we'll be doing the startups of the heat and air systems. Being able to go ahead and get the spaces conditioned so they can do finishes. So everything's going pretty well. Uh, thi- this is, uh, this is the schedule, uh, critical path schedule. I know you can't read. That's too small, but I mainly did it just to point out a couple of dates. On the original contract, we had January 15th is the date of substantial completion. And then on March 16th, that was the date of final approval. Whenever the apartment, when the state comes in and approves it for occupancy.
So what, what does that mean in terms of occupancy, Paxton?
Does it state, once the state approves it, that's when they can occupy it.
Or the January date?
The March date. Yeah, the January date is just whenever the, the construction's pretty much done and they just start having to get ready for that state inspection. There's a lot of final things that have to be done. So, so far Bordeaux has not asked for any days. They've sort of been waiting for all their weather days till the end after it was dried in. Uh, so currently, they are seven days behind schedule. However, they have submitted a request for 17 weather days. That's for the entire year. They've had 17 weather days. So that will put them 10 days ahead of schedule. Uh, that would make the, I guess, the final completion actually the first of, first of, um, April.
Paxton, do you have any feel for the inspection? I know some of the state inspections have been delayed because of the COVID and reluctance to come out. And do you anticipate any issue? I mean, that's three months, one month away.
You never know with, with the state. Uh, they are not coming out as much. They actually, uh, they asked that question to the state because we've got so many phases of the construction. And they're saying that they'll come out, I think, at phase one and then at phase five. Uh, but we just have to let them know when they're doing our finals and they, they'll come out if they're in the area. But they're really only going to require the fire marshal to do it locally. So that simplifies things. Um, but the big unknown for us is the smoke control system. You know, we've, we've had some issues with the existing system, making, had to do some tweaks to, to make it right. And you never know exactly how it's going to merge with the new system. Because once we reoccupy those areas, that, that smoke control system has to be re-inspected and approved. So we, we don't know exactly what the state's going to require on that, but they're working with the state and trying to prepare for it. Uh, just the overall schedule, um, you know, when they've finished phase one, then phase two is a short one where they're, um, just only take about three months. Then we'll go into phase three. That's when they do the bulk of the renovation there in the booking. Uh, that will take about six months, finish up in December of 2021. Phase four is another short phase, about three months. And then the final phase, phase five, is when they come and renov- renovate the, uh, existing housing units. And that will take about six months, finishing in October of 2022. And that seems like a long time, two more years of mainly renovation. But because the way it is phased and the building has to stay occupied the whole time, it just takes twice as long. So. Uh, any questions on the detention center before I move on to the courthouse? All right, well, the next one is the renovation of the courthouse for the clerk of court. And just a refresher, uh, about, about last January, you awarded a contract to CPL Architects for doing the final design and construction administration. And, uh, because of COVID and the, uh, high-density storage, it's, it's taken probably twice as long as I would have expected. But it, uh, it's, it's getting to the point where we're about ready to put it out for bid. We just had a few last-minute requests for additional design. Uh, there are the counter redesign due to some COVID issue, um, structural evaluation due to the high-density storage and additional construction administration. So I just wanted to go over those three items and give you a little more information. Uh, first was the counter change. When the architects originally designed the front counter into the, the clerk's office, they had three sections, the criminal division, civil division, and the clerk where they take the money. They did not have counter space for the estates division. However, you know, right after the, we approved the origi- the preliminary design, that's when COVID hit. And they found out pretty quick that they needed counter space. They had a constant line out in the hallway for people waiting on the estates division. So they went back and, uh, asked the architects to look at providing the space for the estates division. And they came up with this drawing. However, like I said, this happened after they had already approved the final design of the floor plan. And they had already started, you know, developing the engineering drawings. So this is a, um, additional services request. But it's just, they, until COVID happened, they really had no idea it was necessary. Next item was the, uh, structural evaluation. This drawing here was from the original, um, space needs study we did at the courthouse. And at that time, they knew that the clerk's office was going to want high-density storage. So they had an engineer to evaluate the structure to find out where that, they could be located. Unfortunately, the, they didn't know much about the, the storage at that time. So he had to just pretty much assume worst-case scenario on how much weight would be there. And he ended up with these fairly, the red areas that you see on the image are the areas approved for high-density storage. And they're pretty long and narrow. Unfortunately, you can see this is an actual high, the area of the high-density storage for estates. It, it, it just doesn't fit in those long, narrow spaces. It, it had to exceed outside of that. So we would like to go back to have the engineer reevaluate it now that we know specifics on how much weight's going to be and where the rails are going to be located. Hopefully, he can look at this now with that known and, uh, say that it's okay. Or else tell us that something needs to be done to make it work. And then the final thing was, um, this is the phasing plan. And when the architects first started laying out the space, they were intending that they could do it in three phases. However, once they started getting into the project, they realized that it was probably more realistic that it was going to take five phases. Uh, very, sort of like the detention center, you're, you're having to keep the space occupied during the whole time. And it just stretches things out and takes longer. And because of that, you know, it's going to take more site visits, more time for the architect, which they had not budgeted for. So those three items, the, um, counter redesign was $9,000, $7,200 for the structural evaluation, and $7,000 for the additional construction administration. That brings the total additional services to $23,200. But the architect is pretty far along. They think that if approved, they will be able to go ahead and wrap up the design pretty quick and be able to come back next month and present a final design and request that we authorize them to go out for bid. Uh, because of the holidays, it'll probably take more than one month. But they will be able to come back in February to present the bid results and award construction contract. So, uh, if you'd like to proceed with, uh, this project, I just request that you, uh, approve the, um, budget adjustment that Will's going to present here shortly. Any questions on that before we move on to the?
I have a question, too, just, I guess, general.
Okay.
That being the building that it is, it's fairly old. Uh, is there any, are, are these the results of the building being the age that it is? Or is it just, uh, the fact that we're trying to redo what's going on inside?
It's mainly just that we're redoing it. The, the building was originally designed for certain structural load, um, say for the high-density storage. And whenever you go with that concentrated storage, it, 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 it can't exceed what it was originally designed for. You have a part of the building is on slab-on-grade and it doesn't really matter. So they could put as much as they want to in those areas. But the, the other area has a, I guess, a special type of, they call it a waffle grid system where it's concrete reinforced. And they just have to make sure that they're not putting too much weight with that high-density filing that it would exceed what it was designed for.
Yeah, so it presents a certain problem there, is what I'm saying, uh, having to match.
Well, it could. Now that we know more about the, the amount and the weight of the storage, you know, we're hoping that the, the engineer can just look at it and say that, you know, it'll be fine. You know, before, when they didn't know much about it, they had to assume a worst-case scenario. So hopefully, uh, it'll prove to be strong enough for this, this files. Uh, if not, then we'll just have to have him advise us on what needs to be done in order to make it work.
Is that going to create a problem with being, if it were, I'm saying, we don't know whether it will.
It, it could stretch things out.
Some redesign possibly or something in the future because of that?
Well, it, it could happen more, I mean, instead of coming back in December, you know, if the engineer comes back and says, no, it's just not going to work, then we may not be able to come back in December. It may, may be into next year before we're able to come back and.
So how, how confident are we in the $2 million?
Um.
I mean, and when we get started, we have to finish.
Yeah, I think, whenever it goes out for bid, we'll, we'll, we'll find out. I mean, if, we, we know that, that the probably high-density storage is probably going to come in higher than we originally thought. Uh, that there was probably more of it than we originally thought were, was needed. And then the construction. Um, and then the construction will just, it, it's hard to tell right now with, with renovation work. Luckily, um, the market seems to be pretty good right now. There's a lot of contractors that are busy, but then you have other contractors that, that are bidding on work, so.
We don't think we're gonna wind up a one bidder.
No, I don't think so. It is specialty work, it's in a courthouse, so you'll have some contractors that, that will probably pass on it just because they, they don't like doing work in a occupied building. But we'll, uh, I, I think, I think it'll be a good job and we'll get bids on it.
I called a guy, this is certainly not comparative, but I called a guy today to, to do some sheet rock work and paint. He said it'd be February before he could get to me.
Man. Yeah, I mean, it's all over the place right now. It really depends on who you, who you talk to. But I don't think we're, we're nearly as bad as we were with the detention center the other year where pretty much everybody was, was only doing the, the, at risk. I think we'll have some people interested in it.
Paxton, on the, the additional fees were twenty-three thousand. Do you know what the original, just for some comparison, what the original, uh, amount of the design fees were?
The original design fee was like eighty-nine thousand, which, that, that's one of the reasons I'm, I'm resubmitting it to is because it exceeds the amount, I guess, that Hal can do, uh, so with.
I'm just trying to get a comparison of how much extra this is to over and above the original contract for the.
Yeah, it was, the original was eighty-nine thousand. And of course, that did not count, that there was original contract for the preliminary design that that did not include as well. So it was, it was probably closer to a hundred thousand. So this would be another quarter.
Quarter.
All right, uh, any other questions?
Other questions?
All right, uh, next item is Northgate renovations. Uh, here's a, uh, overhead drawing of Northgate. The green areas, that is the county occupied. Yellow is state occupied with probation and parole. The blue is the tenant occupied and the, uh, purple is the vacant. And the three areas I wanted to focus on, I've got highlighted there in red, starting at the bottom. You have a rent a center, that is a future renovation area. Uh, but their contract, uh, or lease does not end until about twenty twenty-two. So they've still got a couple more years in their lease. Um, but we want to go ahead and, and look ahead at that work because it, it, it will be a more substantial renovation. Just next to that, the, the, uh, purple area labeled DSS, that is the area that the Ashborough Housing Authority, we had rented to them the other year. Um, it, so it's a smaller area, it was already been renovated by our maintenance department. Uh, it should not take as much, as much work, but there is some minor changes that would be needed for DSS. Right now, DSS is in the business continuity space because of COVID. You know, once COVID is finally over, uh, they're gonna be out of space. And so we've earmarked this area for them. The, uh, last area at the top there, that is the area that Dollar General moved out of. Um, this, they moved out officially back in August. You can see it's basically just a wide open space. But I'm, I'm anticipating it'll be very similar to the work we did, you know, in elections and, uh, day reporting. So it'd be a pretty, pretty big, just basically cutting, gutting it and starting over. Uh, I did have a best, asbestos assessment done a, a week or two ago and haven't got the results back yet. But, uh, just because of the age of construction, I'm anticipating there'll probably be some areas that have to be abated.
How about the rent a center? How much longer is their lease?
There is until twenty twenty-two. I think it was mid-twenty twenty-two. So a little less than two years.
They don't show any signs of leaving?
No, no, I think they're planning to stay there until we're, till their lease is up. Uh, so the area that Dollar General moved out of, we had Smith Senate Architects to look at that, to do a preliminary design, uh, splitting it up for child support and sheriff's office, criminal division, and pretty much just splitting it in two. Both areas would be right around the lower four thousand square feet. Uh, this would clear up a lot of space for the sheriff's office there at the county office building. I mean, right now, I think they've got a lot of people coming to share offices and, and just out of space. So this would, would help them out a lot. It'd also free up space where child support is currently, so. Uh, if you would like to proceed with the renovation at Northgate, once again, I just ask you, uh, you approve of the, uh, budget adjustment whenever Will presents it here shortly. And the last, the project I want to talk about was animal services. Over the last year, I've sort of been working with the, the managers out there to look at their space needs. And, uh, we come up with mainly three items. First is office space for the, uh, animal control officers. Next was, there were, there were some minor renovations needed in the existing original kennel space. And then, um, uh, kennel space for the aggressive dogs. So just real quick, go over those three items. First, um, the, uh, the office space, this is a narrow photograph of the shelter. And also, uh, right through the woods, you can see at the top, at the bottom is the animal shelter. And at the top is the, the old transfer station, which was closed whenever waste management built the new landfill. So at that time, we really didn't need the space, so we allow waste management to use it for their, uh, drivers as an office space. However, we learned that they really don't use it very much. I mean, the drivers basically park there, leave, and then they may, unless they come in on break or stopping to do some paperwork, they're pretty much out on the road all day. So there's very little time spent in the office. And there's about three other buildings out there available for them to use. So we talked to waste management, they agreed to vacate this building and move, you know, the other spaces. Uh, right in between the two buildings, it, it, you know, it looks like wood, but you could, I put some little dots there to show there's actually a gravel drive that sort of connect the, the two buildings, uh, through the woods there. So it's pretty easy for the animal control officers to, to go to the other building. Originally, whenever this thought, idea came up, um, you know, we had a different manager or, or director out there and they were a little concerned about spreading their staff out in, uh, in the two buildings. However, now they've got a different, uh, management structure. And actually, one of their, uh, managers would actually be in that space with the animal control officers. So they're fine with this. Uh, maintenance has already gone in, do, done some upgrades to the building, um, paint, ceiling, new heat and air system. So it's pretty far along, they should be able to probably move in pretty soon.
I guess I think Paxton was space issues up at the current shelter. That would, what you, I guess, you're gonna talk about here?
Yes, that's what I'm getting ready to get at. But first, uh, just to talk about the interior upgrades, there were two areas. One was the, uh, medical office, uh, maintenance. Once again, they went in, built a wall, added a door and added a, um, it's a vet table. It's basically like a long sink that's, that looks like a table, but actually can wash down animals if they need to. On the end, that's their euthanasia room, same thing. They, they made some upgrades to the space, changed out some windows and, uh, added a, a wet table. There are those minor changes that if, if the funds work out and there's money available, we'll probably do them. If not, they can budget them for some upcoming years. Last item was the aggressive doll kennel. Right now, if you see the existing building, there's the area with the white, the light colored roof. That is the original shelter space and that is currently like where they have their, um, uh, stray dogs and the aggressive dogs. And, uh, I think the state has pointed out, you know, the, the, the problems with keeping both animals in one building like that. They've, they've been able to get by with that, but I, I don't, I, I don't think the state sort of frowns on doing that. So that's why they really have wanted additional kennel space for their aggressive dogs. So there at the, sort of the bottom of the photo, that, uh, the light colored square with the star, that is where they're planning to build the new, new kennel. Before, we were talking about building an office back there and it was gonna be smaller, it was gonna be about twenty by twenty. This is a little bit larger, it's about twenty-four by twenty-five, so about a, a third is large. Um, however, it does require more site work. You know, before, they didn't have to access the backside of the building. However, with the cleaning of the kennels, they will actually have to raise the grade in order to get around back and, and clean those kennels out. Uh, so that did drive the price of it up. Back in September, I put it out for bid, had good results, had five people, uh, five companies bidding on it. Um, pretty close, especially the bottom three were very close to each other. And the low bid ended up going to SC Troggen and Sons for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. And, uh, now that's more than what y'all had originally given them and budgeted for a hundred and fifty thousand. However, I, I think the animal services staff, they've looked at their budget, they had some carryover funds and some possible, um, lapse salary that may be available, so they think they can absorb the cost. So on behalf of the, uh, animal services, I'd request that you approve a contract to SC Troggen and Sons Construction for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, uh, for the construction of the aggressive doll kennel. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What's the anticipated time?
They, the contractor said he, he thinks he can have it done in, in three months. Now, right now, it's not the best time to be starting construction projects. So if the weather hits, that will obviously slow it down. But, but if everything goes well, I mean, probably within three or four months, they, they'll be wrapping up.
All right, any questions? Does that conclude your?
Yes, that, that was it, that was the last item.
Questions, Paxton? All right, so we'll, we'll take up the animal shelter project first since we have a, a bid to approve. And then Will's going to, uh, go over the two, the budget amendments for Northgate and the courthouse. So, um, we're gonna take up the request for the contract on the animal shelter at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand and, uh, seven hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we award the bid to SC Troggen and Sons with aggressive dog kennel at, at the animal shelter in the amount of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Second, I missed, now, further discussion?
Can I just get a clarification real quick? So, and Paxton or Will, whichever one of you, so we're saying we allocated one fifty and so that leaves eighteen-seven, but they are able to adjust their budget, so we're just in for the one fifty? Okay, all right, just want to clarify that, so I'm good?
Good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it right.
No additional monies are gonna allocate.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will?
Okay, as Paxton mentioned, these are the types of projects that we've done pay as you go. So we had a little pay as you go money, so, um, this is for your consideration, whether you want to move forward on these projects or not. The first one, uh, for your consideration is the transfers to the courthouse project. We'd spent thirty-six thousand or so, um, on design before we suspended the, the project. This is the difference that just brings it back up to, the transfer will bring it up to the two million dollars that we have in the capital project as its budget. And that will just continue it on through the bidding process, so we can see what the true, true cost might be. Uh, but it, it may or may not be enough, just for clarity. But that one million, nine sixty-three, seven seventy-five just takes the total transfer and sets it aside for the project. Second budget amendment would be the transfers of the Northgate project. As Paxton mentioned, you've got space needs for certain departments we're trying to address, but also, um, response to the, uh, coronavirus and trying to segregate some of our staff as much as we can. And that's what, uh, Northgate, Northgate's been very good, uh, to do with that. And that's just a, uh, a two million dollar transfer as well too, just to get the project started, to get the design work going. And, you know, we'll see how far we go, uh, with each stage right now. I think the, um, more urgent one would be to renovate the old Dollar General space for the sheriff and for child support. And if we move child support out, then that provides a lot of space for Juvenile Day Report, excuse me, Juvenile Day Reporting Center and give, will give them, uh, some ability to do some work.
And then going back to your previous, uh, uh, financial report, this is roughly four million of the six million, uh, over our bogey.
That's correct.
This is just setting aside those funds, it's not, we're not looking to spend any money right now. Just allocating and appropriating.
It's just letting us know that we need to get the design work moving along.
Will? Go ahead, I'm sorry, Dave, no, go ahead.
I, I, I'm just, you know, with the COVID situation, I'm a little leery spending money till things get a little bit clearer, uh, till you get your sales taxes in for two or three months to see where we're gonna wind up. But, you know, appropriating it, I think we're gonna do these projects. And the Lord knows, we've been messing with the courthouse a long while. Um, like to get that one, that one moving, but, uh, I, I don't know that I would be real excited about spending a lot of money, uh, at this point that we, you know, appropriating is fine, spending is another thing, at least until things get a little bit better. That's kind of my, my opinion.
Will, does the, does the six million, uh, where, where does the, uh, decision we made about the car, the vehicles, is that, is the six million taking that into account?
Um, in, in a sense, it, it can, it just depends on what our sales tax numbers end up being.
But, but right now, it's covered.
It's covered.
All right, other questions? And it's.
I agree with David, uh, there's a difference between appropriating and, and spending. Makes it a lot easier.
Budget's one thing, writing the check is, is another. But, but right now, the budget would allow us to add, add that to our budget without affecting our, uh, our policy.
Yep, I think that the concept here is if you're willing to move the projects forward, do the budget amendment, we'll transfer the money over. We can pay the architect and do the work that's necessary to know whether to move forward with the actual bidding of the construction or not. If you want to set it aside and not do anything right now, if we want to wait a little bit longer, then that's the decision. There would be no budget amendments.
Paxton, you said we'd be ready, is this the one you said we'd be ready to bid in, in February? The courthouse?
Northgate, the courthouse, we should be ready, able to bid pretty soon. Uh, Northgate, we just got preliminary, preliminary design, we haven't even finalized the design yet. So we would have to come back to you a second time, once that design's finalized and, you know, you'd have another opportunity, uh, to.
So again, to David's point, we, we would be bidding the courthouse project first.
Yes, yeah, courthouse is much farther along, they finished the design, they're, they're wrapping it up in the next month or so. Not Northgate.
But I know part of the courthouse plan was based on having Northgate available. So Northgate's far enough along to fit into that process.
That space that courthouse has already been vacated by probation and parole, so they're, they're ready to.
So that's, that's, the Northgate project is not, is not gonna hold that up?
No.
They've, they've already moved out those two units up there, so they've got relocation and wiggle room to, to do the renovation.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so our, our issue is, uh, to approve the two budget amendments, uh, for the courthouse project and the Northgate project. Out of the, uh, six million, um, and the six million, oh eighty-six, oh seventy-one, um, assigned amount from our fund balance policy.
I guess the question is, is anything else out there? Any other projects that would be, um, looming on the horizon? I'm, I'm, I know, I mean, these are the only two I can, can really think of.
Yeah, well, certainly courthouse, we'd already approved and we just suspended that one. So we wanted to gauge whether you wanted to move forward on that or not. The Northgate is just developing as we go, the spaces is available, do we use it or we, you know, mothball it for a while? I think the next big issues might be, and I'm not sure how much it is because we haven't, weren't done anything yet, but once, um, if we were to move child support out, we'd want to do some renovation to, to take advantage of the building where Juvenile Day Reporting Center is at, they need classroom space. So you'd be taking some offices out and, you know, do, doing some work there, but we don't have a dollar estimate for that yet.
No.
Okay.
It's kind of a progression.
The other thing, we've, y'all have talked about, uh, DSS, it's possibly expanding satellite office.
Move up to Mike, Paxton.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, y'all have talked about the possibility of doing a satellite office for DSS up in Archdale. And that, that could be another item that y'all want to do something with, so.
Other questions or discussion?
And you did clarify that the child support rework for that, if we move them, y'all hadn't looked at that at all yet. That building where Juvenile Day Reporting is and child support is now, if we move them, we hadn't looked at that building at all.
No, we've done the preliminary floor plan and that, that's it. So this money would allow us, I guess, to hire the architect to proceed with those designs and possibly come back with a, a, a design to present to you, but. designs and possibly come back with a, a, a design to present to you, but very preliminary at this point.
So do we have the money set aside for, this will cover doing the design work at North Gate?
We don't have the money set aside right now, but if, if you approve this, budget adjustment.
It would come out of this two million.
We will have the funds for the architectural work if you approve this, or even a smaller amount. You didn't have, yes, you could do less, and we would still have money for the design work.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. What's the pleasure of the board? Two budget amendments?
Can we do them at the same time? Or can we do them separately?
Uh, we can do those.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget amendments for the courthouse capital project and the budget amendment for the North Gate capital project.
They have a second?
I'll start it there.
Second time.
Paxton.
Mr. Kidd?
Paxton.
Paxton? Pick one. All right. Further discussion or questions? Good question. Good discussion. Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Those who no, and the budget amendments are approved. Thank you, Paxton. Thank you, Will. Next is Amy. You have the next couple of items here for closing the road and for auction sale.
Yes, okay.
Foreclosure.
First, I had received a request to close a portion of Coal Mountain Road. The request was presented, submitted by Sherry Craig on behalf of her parents, Milton and Patricia Cole. They own the property on both sides of the portion of the road that is requested being closed. And, you know, I drove out there and looked at it, and it's not even really a road anymore. It's gra, it's a grassy area. Now, I looked at it on our old, old aerial photos, and at some point, it was a dirt road. But it is not state-maintained. The state, when they took in the rest of Coal Mountain Road, they did not take in that portion. So they have requested that that be closed so that they can consolidate their property.
Does any other property owner need that for access?
No, no, sir. They, they own the property on both sides of it.
Nothing at the end of it.
Yeah, no, well, the end of it, it goes into another road. So no, nobody needs, nobody needs it for access. The procedure for closing it is governed by one fifty-three A dash two forty-one, and so it's basically, the first step of that is for you to adopt a resolution declaring your intent to close that portion of the road and calling for a public hearing on the question. I will then publish notice of that once a week for three successive weeks, and I have to mail a copy of that resolution to any property owner who adjoins that portion of the road who didn't join in the request. And in this instance, there's nobody that I have to mail it to. And I also have to post a notice of the closing along this now nonexistent road. Then at the public hearing, anyone can speak, and if you determine that closing that road will not be detrimental to public interest and will not deprive any individual of access to their property, then you can adopt an order closing that portion of the road, and then I file that order with the registered deeds office, and that's the end of the process. So we're, we're at the beginning of the process right now. You have a resolution declaring your intent to close that section of Coal Mountain Road in front of you. If you pass the resolution tonight, I'll proceed with the, the advertisements and the postings, and we'll have the public hearing at the next, at your next meeting.
Any questions, Amy? Our issue is to adopt the resolution to close a section of Coal Mountain Road and calling for a public hearing on the question at six o'clock on December the seventh, two thousand and twenty, which would be our next monthly board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to adopt the resolution. Further questions or discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Those who no, and you got it.
Okay.
Next item is foreclosure auction.
Well, it's not exactly a foreclosure auction. It's, it's a little unusual situation. We held a foreclosure auction in June, and the county ended up the owner of one of the parcels because we didn't have an outside bidder. The bidding was started at the taxes owed and the fees, and when, when we start the bidding at the taxes owed and the fees, that is considered a bid by the county. We did not have an outside bidder, so the county ended up the owner at that foreclosure sale. Recently, our taxpayer legal was contacted by an adjoining property owner who expressed interest in purchasing the property. She actually had forgotten about the sale. So, you know, as you're aware, whenever the county disposes of property, there are legal procedures that we have to follow to ensure that it's a competitive process and that we get the best price possible. There are several different ways that that can be accomplished under the law, but one of the least expensive ways is by auction. That process is set forth in one sixty A dash two seventy, and basically what happens is you would adopt a resolution authorizing the sale, describing the property to be sold, specifying the date, time, place, and terms of the sale, and stating that any offer or bid must be accepted and confirmed by your, by this board before the sale can be effective. That resolution is before you tonight. If you pass that resolution, then I will publish notice of the sale, which I am requesting that you set for December seventh at ten a.m. There's a reason for that. I'll explain. Basically, the notice has to be published thirty days before the sale. So the seventh is the earliest I can actually hold it, when it won't be on a weekend. And the seventh happens to be the date of your next meeting. So if I hold the sale that morning, I can report the bid to you that evening. If you accept the bid, we can move forward with the sale, and the new property owner will be the owner on January one for tax purposes. So it makes it, that's, that's the reason for, for, for the dates that I've chosen.
Will you reach out to that specific person?
I, I've already done that to make sure that they would be available on December seventh, because, you know, knowing that we didn't have anyone else before, I did want to make sure that that specific person would be able to be at the sale. And of course, we would welcome any other bidders that would like to show up at that time. But that's how this process proceeds, and so I'm before you tonight, asking you to adopt the resolution before you, which authorizes the sale, describes the property, specifies the date and time and terms of the sale, and states that it has to be reported back to you in order to be effective.
All right. Questions, Amy? Okay. The item issued before us is a resolution authorizing the auction sale, ten o'clock a.m., Monday morning, December the seventh, two thousand and twenty.
I move we approve the resolution authorizing the sale.
You have a second? Second by who? Any other discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Those who no, and it's approved.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay. Mary Joan, you have a, you're up.
Request on the Sandy Creek Bridge project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners, for allowing me the opportunity to come before you to present a request for the county's strategic planning implementation funds for the Deep River State Trail, the Sandy Creek Bridge. I, I have to say, with this pandemic, all these restrictions, that trails have been invaluable. You know, they're not simply a, a, a nice-to-have amenity anymore. Trails have become an imperative, as, as people have flocked to the, the trails in our municipalities and counties. I mean, Archdale, Randleman, and Franklinville reported a hundred percent increase in trail use as people try to find a safe place to get outdoors and exercise and then enjoy our natural, historic, and, and cultural heritage. So I just wanted to point that out. And they're, they've become essential to our physical and, and mental and emotional health. And they also are important to economic development, both for small businesses that, like restaurants and, and outfitters, as well as business and industry that are looking for outdoor experiences for their employees to locate, to locate here. So I really appreciate that, and I want to thank you for letting me serve as the county's trail and natural heritage coordinator for these past two years and, and be able to work and assist the municipalities and the other trail partners that we have on the county trail advisory council. This has been invaluable. Many of these are small municipalities, and they need help with grant applications and grant administration. And the matching funds that, that you've made available are, just make it so that they can do the job of constructing, expanding, and, and maintaining trails. There's been, been a lot of progress, and I, I just thank you for setting aside some money for trails. It, I know you have other demands on, on your funds. You've got the hospital and the school and all that, but it's well worth it to this small investment in trails because it's leveraged so that the municipalities can get other funds. So just as an update of the, the Deep River State Trail, it was an initiative that was started in, by the TDA, the Tourism Development Authority, in the late nineties. And they worked to get it designated as a state trail, and that was happening in two thousand and seven. And then the municipalities of Randleman, Franklinville, and Ramsor set to work to construct trails. And they have invested one point two million dollars in the five miles that have been completed so far. And then in two thousand and fifteen, the TDA put together a task force to try to see if they could bring together all these trails and to assist them in, in, in any, any way. And the TDA paid for a conceptual plan, fifteen miles of, of land trails and another nineteen miles of paddleway. We're the only state trail that has both a greenway and a blueway. And the county commissioners approved that conceptual plan in two thousand and seventeen, and the top priority was the Sandy Creek Bridge to connect Franklinville's rail trail, which at the time was only one mile, it's now one and three-quarters mile, to Ramsor's point-six-mile trail, right there at the U.S. sixty-four highway bridge as you're going into, to Ramsor. So since that was a top priority, you gave Strategic Planning Implementation Funds to do an engineering study, a preliminary engineering study, so we could get started on that. Well, we were all pretty shocked when we saw the price tag on it. It was three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars because there's such a wide floodplain there where Sandy Creek and Deep River come together under that bridge. So that was, that was pretty daunting. So we came back last year and said, hey, could you give us sixty thousand dollars out of the one hundred and one thousand dollars that was available to have a match, so we could have a thirty percent match for this? We would take some money that was left over from the preliminary engineering plan and, and do that. And you said yes. So we were very happy about that. So we went about trying to find some other money. You want to switch to the, oh. All right, Cliff? There you go. That's the fifteen miles. So we, we talked with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, who's been really helpful with us. We, we've been in this Piedmont legacy trail, which is a twelve-county regional trail system, and it's, it's, it's sponsored by Piedmont Land Conservancy in the Piedmont Triad Regional Council. And I'm very proud that Randolph County was the first one to endorse this, this, this system, having a, a twelve-county regional system. And they said, well, we found some USDA funds for community facilities, and they have some money left over, grant money left over from Hurrican Michael. So Mayor Perry Connor from Franklinville and I got on the phone with them, and they said, wow, you have a preliminary engineering plan. Hmm. We think that Franklinville qualifies for a thirty-five percent grant, not loan, but a grant, which would be a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So I says, send the information, and we will, I want to show the bridge. Send the information, and we'll look and see what type of environmental review has to be done. Well, last week, I got that information back, and Jesse Day with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council said, we can do that review for you. We'll send you a quote, which we can use some of the bridge money for that. And the idea is you have to complete that before you can put your application in, and which will work out okay because Congress has not appropriated any money for this program yet. They have, don't have a budget yet, and they'll probably have one after the first of the year, so we can put in the application the first of the year. Now, what that does for us is that we will have, and if we could use this sixty-five thousand dollars, which the county trail advisory council voted to ask for the sixty-five thousand this year to go to the bridge, we would only have fifty-five or sixty thousand dollars to raise in private funds. So you're leveraging a lot of money here so that this, you know, this could be, so that we have a connection of two and a half miles, so it would be five miles round trip, and then another three-quarters of a mile that's at Faith Rock, and be able to really not attract people from just the county or the region, but outside the region. You know, lots of people would drive here to, to be able to hike five miles and, five and three-quarters of a mile. So we're very excited about this. They thought it was a very good idea, and that, and I know you have it in your pack. It's the, the description that we sent, sent to them. So, so I would like to give you an update on what we spent the hundred and one thousand dollars from last year. You know, sixty thousand went for Deep River, but then we also had twenty-four thousand dollars go to Archdale to expand the three-mile greenway in Creekside Park to the, the Archdale Trinity Middle School. They, the twenty-four thousand would go for a bridge that's needed over Muddy Creek, and, and the council for Archdale already designated about two hundred thousand dollars for this project. It's the first priority in their pedestrian plan. So this year, what they decided to do is try to leverage that a little bit more, and they've applied for a recreational trail program grant of two hundred and fifty thousand. So then they will have all of the money to do the entire project. So they're leveraging the twenty-four thousand that you gave them last year to do this. The other seventeen thousand dollars went to Seagrove for their downtown sidewalks. Since all of their, their roads are state-maintained, that, they cannot put the sidewalks in. DOT has to put the sidewalks in. And they say for a mile is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Oh, my goodness. And it would connect also Seagrove Elementary and the library. So we, we, you all approved seventeen thousand dollars to them to pay their twenty-five thousand dollar match, which is really important. They only get nine thousand dollars a year in power bill money to, for, for streets. So twenty-five thousand dollars is huge. So now they only have to come up with eight thousand dollars. And it's now gone to the RPO at, you know, Piedmont Tribe Regional Council. It's being scored right now, and they should know at the first of the year whether they are going to get the seventeen thousand, you know, whether they're going to get the sidewalks, which would really help tourism. Right now, you have to go to Seagrove. You park in one place, and then all of a sudden, you can't get to the other ones. You got to get in your car, and this will make it so that everybody can use the sidewalks in, in the downtown. So that, like I said, that's been very important. The other thing that we used part of the sixty thousand dollars you gave us last year on some Deep River State Trail items. And one was that, you know, even though we have five miles completed, it's in three different places, and nobody can find it. So State Trails said, hey, since you're the first trails on Deep River State Trail, you can design the logo. So the city of Ashboro got with the three municipalities and came up with a logo. State Trails approved it, and so we went about putting up signage. The city of Ashboro has a wonderful sign fabrication shop. And the city of Ashboro has a wonderful sign fabrication shop. So they worked with the towns and came up with 27 different directional signs and trailhead signs. And we used a little bit of that money to, Ashboro said that they would do the signs, fabricate the signs free of charge, but they would maybe need some money for the materials. We were going to get that from the TDA, but the TDA, by that time, their tourism money had dried up. So we have up to $6,000 that's going, that is going to go to them when they finish all the different signs. But the signs, most of the signs are up. They were put up in August. And then we were, like I said, we were working with the Piedmont Legacy Trails and they have an AmeriCorps worker that is assigned to them. And I wanted the county map that's on their interactive map on their website updated because they had all kinds of problems with it. There were miscorrections. So they gave us the database and Linda Smith, the county IT, and Jared Byrd with the county's emergency management services, updated the map, sent the files back up there. So we have an updated map. Most of the maps on there are not as up to date. So I said, well, you know, it'd be nice if we could have a county trail app, a map for a Deep River State Trail. So they immediately said, we'll do a brochure. And since we didn't have any TDA money, they, Brianna Hefferman, the AmeriCorps worker, designed all this. Piedmont Triad Regional Council paid for all the graphics. And we used some money, it was less than $3,000, for the TDA to print it and be in charge of the inventory, distributing to welcome centers and visitor centers and hotels and all that sort of thing. And I was glad that Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Haywood came to the celebration we had in late August. We went to all three towns and celebrated having new signage and a new brochure. So that, some of the money went, also went, went to that. A couple of other updates. We did receive a recreational trail program grant for a blueway, the first blueway section, three-mile section between Worthful and Central Falls. So it's Randleman and Ashboro putting up the 25%, matches about $25,000. And we've started on that. We have the, the design that was provided by Wildlife Resources. We've also put in an application for Randleman for their Phase 3, which would go from Worthful up to Phase 1, Phase 2, which it sort of ended because they have a rock outcrop that they can't quite figure out how to get off. So we put in that application. We should hear about that soon. But that will provide a trailhead at Worthful and a 1.3 mile trail. So it'll be over two and a half mile round trip for them. And Ramsore, I'm happy to say, they've been working with Unique Places, which is a group that buys and sells land. Anyway, they put in an application for Clean Water Management Trust Fund for a conservation easement on the property. That's the dam and both sides of Deep River. Ramsore does not own to the river from Leonard Park or from their rail trail. So, and that, it didn't score particularly well. But when Clean Water got to it and found out it was on a state trail, they moved it up and it's going to be funded in June. So they'll have that money, that conservation easement, to use as a match for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant that will establish a trailhead at Brooklyn, at the DuPo there on Brooklyn Avenue, extend the trail a quarter of a mile, and also put in a portage for kayaks and canoes right there at the dam. So there's just lots of things going on. I know you, I'm standing between you and leaving. So I'll kind of cut it short there. But I did want to point out that we're celebrating these trails with the Mayor's Fitness Challenge, which is a seven-week challenge. I think Amy's on a team. You try to put in as many steps as you can. You don't just have to walk or hike or run. You can do kayaking, you can do biking, you can do yoga, you can do gardening. But part of that is we're featuring our trails in the towns. So every Saturday at nine o'clock, seven mayors have signed up, four of them already completed, to lead hikes on trails in their parks and to showcase what they, what they have. Coming up, we just did Liberty on last Saturday. This Saturday is Randleman and then we have Ramsore. We're also doing our Sunday hikes. Those are usually monthly hikes that Jim Rich leads there. During this time, we do one every, every week, every Sunday. On Sunday, we went to Mount Shepherd. And this coming Sunday, we're going to go to Caraway Mountain to feature some of the county trails, including the Uwari Trail. So I wanted you to know about that. The news on the Uwari Trail, I have to tell you this, is that we've been working for eight years for the US Forest Service to purchase the Walker Creek Trailhead, future trailhead from the North Carolina Zoo. It finally transferred last week. And so since the Uwari Trailblazers have built two and a half miles from that trailhead to the Uwari Trail, and they've also graded the driveway and the parking lot, it's pretty much ready to open. So we're meeting with the Forest Service on Wednesday to figure out what needs to be done to open that gate to the public because everybody is great. And this fills one of the, we only have one gap after this on the Uwari Trail. And let's see. The biggest news, I say the biggest news for last. I am very pleased that as a part of this Piedmont Legacy Trail, since we had updated the map and everything, they said, I said, how about a trail guide? I really need something that has all of the county trails in one spot. So on PiedmontTrails.org, there is a trail guide. It's like 22 pages. But it has each trail, it's about 20-some trails, has each trail, the location and the description, how difficult it is, what the length is, what's the surface? Is it ADA? What kind of features does it have? It has a map and a photo. And this, when you get to the end, you get this downloadable, printable PDF that you can take with you with all the trails. So we have all the trails, county trails, in one spot. So it includes all the municipalities, the ones at the zoo, the Uwari Trail. All of them are on this one map. And I'll just say in conclusion that trails are really important. And I really appreciate having this matching money because it really is a good investment. And it's going to become even more important because Congress passed the Great American Outdoors Act that fully funds the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Well, you say, well, what's so good about that? Well, it's been 50 years and it's never been fully funded. It's $900 million. Million dollars. And what that means for North Carolina, instead of getting a million dollars in Land and Water Conservation Fund, state parks will be getting 9 million. And with 9 million, they'll share it with local governments like they used to do. Yeah, I think you remember, you know, probably Chairman Frye, you remember when they used to share, you could apply for Land and Water Conservation Funds. And that calls for a 50% match. So it works a lot like Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. So this is even more important. And we've already put together 16 trail projects that are ready to go. All they need is funding. So this is so important. I really appreciate you taking the time to, for listening to the update and listening to the request for $65,000 to go to the Sandy Creek Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Joelle. Very in-depth. I know the folks at COG, Jesse Day's been very involved in our project and has really gotten to like Randolph County through this project. Any other questions or comments from Mary Joelle?
I might just say that within days of the time that the Randolph County Trail Guide became available, I had somebody from Raleigh who years ago graduated from high school here before her family moved away to want a trail guide for trails in Randolph County. And so I, so I sent it to her so that, because she was planning a trip, bringing, you know, bringing friends and didn't want to go all the way to the mountains. And so was able to come to Randolph County.
This is, the 65,000 is what's left from the allocation that we did, I guess, a couple of years ago with some of the landfill money that we set aside for, for this use. And this, this is the balance that's left in that fund, right, Will?
That's pretty much the balance. We'll have to do a budget amendment next month that recognizes the interest income as well, too, to get to the 65,000.
And it would be used to leverage other monies, as you pointed out.
All of your, all of your projects, all the monies that you've given are leveraging.
Leveraging other money, right.
I'd like to make a motion to allocate $65,000 to the Deep River Trail Sandy Creek Bridge project.
Thanks.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Thank you, Mary Joelle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your dedication and passion.
Yes.
Glad you did. Anybody would think she was a paid employee.
All right, next is, I have a motion that we set February the 11th, six o'clock for a joint meeting with the Ashboro City School Board.
So moved, they're great people.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd.
Is there somebody you know on that board?
Aaron Woody, he's, well, he's a superintendent. He's a good friend of mine.
Does it have a second?
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Hal, you have anything? All right, the commissioners update. I know Hope has something.
I do have something.
He's dying to share with us tonight.
I am dying to share this with you. We just found out today, the other commissioners probably have not even heard, but we got an email today announcing that Randolph County Government has just been named a 2020 Healthiest 100 Workplaces in America Award winner. So this is really big. Being named a Healthiest 100 Workplace is an amazing achievement because this is across our entire country. So we have established ourselves to be among the very best in the nation. So I want to thank, we'll be hearing more about that later. But I want to thank several different people for making this award possible. I want to thank our county manager, Hal Johnson, and prior county commissioners who had a vision for wellness and acted on it. So they created a wellness program in 2011. And then they moved to hire Sam Varner as a wellness coordinator in 2016 in order to strengthen that program. I have to thank Sam Varner, who brings his expertise and knowledge, his passion for wellness. He brings all those things to work with him every day. I have to thank all of our department heads because they all work together, they collaborate, they support one another in whatever we're facing as a county to make all the different services that we have possible. So I just, I just really have to thank our department heads. And then I have to thank our employees because if our employees did not get on board with the wellness program, if they did not sign up and if they did not participate and utilize the resources available to them, then we would not have received this award. So we all know that our employees had to take, ultimately take the responsibility for their own health and well-being. And they were willing to do that as a result of the program that we have in place. So I just, I'm excited, I'm proud of our county in this. I'm proud of a progressive wellness program. And it's nice to be recognized for that.
That's awesome.
So it is awesome. I also have to take just a second to tie that into the COVID response because part of what the county did is take this, our wellness coordinator and ask him to step into the role of liaison with churches, municipalities, businesses, community organizations. And so with the health of our citizens and employees at stake, the leaders of all of those different types of organizations voluntarily came together and worked with Sam, with public health in order to create safe spaces for our people to live, to work, to learn, to worship. So, thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Good news. So are we going to get some press out of this?
We'll get some press out of it, yes. It's coming.
All right. Will they, will that organization make the press release?
Yes, they sure will.
Thank you. Any other commissioner updates?
Mr. Chairman, I guess with the COVID situation, we're not doing any better here in the county. I was checking a while ago and we had another 114 over the last three days. And we, I think we as a board, we, well, for the strategic plan that we worked on three or four years ago, health, safety, and well-being. And I think this board is responsible to our citizens for their health and safety and their well-being. And we as a board, I think, need to be, take a leadership role in the response. Quote I found, I like it, leaders take people where they want to go. Great, great leaders take people where they don't necessarily want to go, but where they ought to be. And this is something I think is going to continue on for the foreseeable future. And we've already talked a little bit about the impact on some of our county budget. But I think we just need to be wary of it, be upfront with our citizens and that we take the responsibility for what's happening in the county going forward. So another update, I won't toot my own horn a whole lot, but we are on the presidential initiative for the North County Association. It's Ronnie Smith, the president this year, is using food systems and resiliency as his initiative this year. So hopefully, as this progresses, I'll be able to give you a few updates on what we can do here in the county. Not only from just a food deserts and food pantries and that kind of thing, but also how we can tie the food system from the agricultural. Randolph County is the number one producer in cattle and some other areas. And how we can connect the local farmer to the folks that might need that food.
That's good.
To work on that.
I've just had Hope serve last year on President Austin's presidential initiative. Did a great job. We had a nice report. And so we've got David this year working with President Smith. And I'll just say Randolph County is well-known and well-respected at the state level for involvement of our commissioners and in a multiple facets and a dedication to the county government. And just glad that the association is willing to take advantage of our folks here. And you're going to have other committees that are going to be meeting virtually. I think Kenny was on education for a while. Max was on tax and finance. So get them all involved. And you've been on some others, too, David, before this.
So if you've got anything you want about food systems and concerned about that.
Yes.
I know we've got some folks here in the county that do a great work to the less fortunate and also our school systems and feeding the folks. Their feeding programs during the summers and other times during the year, too. So hopefully tie some stuff together and make it a little bit better for everybody.
We, we are concerned about our county and I think that's been shown with our, we've done 30 videos all through the summer to keep our citizens advised. I think the report that Hope just gave is a good example of what we've done and taking a role right, right from the get-go, even before we got CARES Act money. We were involved in working with our business, our schools, our churches, all through these community organizations. And we, we have, I think, a proven example of a concern for our citizens and we just continue to do that. So any other commissioner updates tonight?
Well, I just wanted to quickly commend another one of our departments briefly, Board of Elections. And just, that's kind of a forefront. But they've worked so hard during early voting, as many days as that was, and it got extended a little bit, which is fine. And just to be able to allow those safe opportunities for everybody in the county to have, like, we've got one more opportunity tomorrow. But just the job they did to get everybody through that in a good, easy way. everybody through that in a good, easy way and everybody was safe and taken care of, I thought was very commendable. It was not an easy job.
No problems.
Yeah. I, I didn't hear any complaints except for the lines were long, but a lot of people voted, so that's good.
That's a good lead in. I was, I was going to remind everybody to get out early in the morning and go vote. And I know we have some candidates up here on this platform and we have some others that's going to be working at various polls around the county tomorrow morning. And so we encourage our citizens to get out and vote. I will say, my wife and I voted the first Saturday of early voting. Well, last week, I got this real official looking notice in the mail that records indicate that you have not yet voted. And so, I mean, it looked real official and I called Hal, I got Melissa Johnson's phone number and I called her and she said, that did not come from the. And she said, I assure you, you have voted, you are on the list. I would, I would not want to miss the opportunity, but my mailbox every day is jammed with all kinds of stuffers and fillers. So our two candidates, Kenny and Maxton, and they do a great job. And this board is, is working together in, in a lot of different facets and ways. And I think the financial report that Will gave tonight speaks to the efforts of this board and, and managing our, our resources. I think it speaks well to the citizens of this county who have worked and endured through this process. And you look at the number of the unemployment rate in Randolph County, yeah, it's up, but not nearly what some of these other communities are. And I, I would remind you, during the recession of 10 years ago, we maintained the lowest unemployment rate in our region through that whole process. And our folks work, their only job every day. And that, that, that's your, the citizens' part and process and contribution to keeping this county stable and keeping it moving forward. So thank everyone. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank all of you and please be safe.